Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to a special Monday morning meeting. We're glad that you're joining us, those that are joining us online, those that are joining us here in person. We'll walk through what we're doing here today. It's really pretty simple. It's a special meeting, and the purpose is to receive a post-incident analysis and a systems improvement report from Jensen Hughes. We welcome you this morning. Glad you guys were able to join us on such short notice to make your schedules work for us. We appreciate that. But this is regarding the Brookhalo apartment fire that took place, the tragic fire that took place in October of 2023. This report is a result of a joint request from Sedgwick County and the City of Wichita. And as a commission, we really laid out just several objectives, but we clearly stated two main objectives that we wanted from this analysis. The first was an in-depth report of what occurred during and after the tragic fire that night in October of 23. The second was to receive systems recommendations and to better understand our public safety response. So we're going to jump right into it. I want to note for the public, this is the, we have just received this report. This is the, the first time that the commission has reviewed this report and analysis. We didn't receive this report beforehand, so the public is receiving it at the same time that we are. So we will jump right in. We do have, I wouldn't say a tight timeline, but with respect of what you have to do today at the City of Wichita, we want to give you enough time to get to the city and prepare that, too. So we're going to shoot for a 10:30 estimated stop time here. We certainly want to make sure all the questions are asked, and we have time to really go through this report and get your feedback, but we're going to shoot for a 10:30 stop here. So with that being said, I'll officially call this special meeting to order for Monday, December the 16th, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
President.
Commissioner Dennis.
President.
Commissioner Howe.
President.
Commissioner Lopez.
President.
Chairman Beatty.
President.
Next item.
New business, item A, Jensen Hughes, Inc., presentation of final report on fire and emergency communications posted, incident analysis and system improvements.
Good morning, Rusty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. This morning, we have in our presence the Jensen Hughes team. This is, these are key members of the team. The team was much larger than this. They've spent a great deal of time doing a great deal of work in order to go through all elements of this incident to the best of their ability and to come forward to you with what they have found and what they may recommend for improvements. With that, John Mimoser, Senior Director for Jensen Hughes, will step to the microphone and I'll allow him to introduce his team.
Thank you. John, good morning. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Let me pull up, up. Thank you. Does that happen? So today with me, I have a few of my members of the nine-person team that worked on this analysis. I have Vern Champlin, I have Brian Nelson, and Scott Rickenheim. All right? So a few of us will be up here presenting this report today. So today, this is the post-incident analysis of the Brookhalo apartment fire. Our agenda today is to look at the, you know, just to give you a very quick high level of our assessment and assignment and approach, to familiarize yourselves with the report outline, and then get to the meat of this, which is going over the incident and going over the incident analysis and recommendations, agency by agency. We're going to then talk a little bit about key incident findings and really a path forward, and then we'll open this up to questions. Why are we here, right? Brookhalo apartment fire, which occurred on October 13th of 2023 tragically took the life of Ms. Paoli Bedeski. It injured several other occupants and could have harmed many others, including first responders. That's what led us here today. Our assignment really was to do a thorough evaluation of all the agencies involved in this tragedy, to develop a clear understanding of how the emergency communication system and all the rest of the public safety system performed, and to come with, come up with a plan and recommendations for improvement. The report that you have in front of you, Commissioners, identifies overarching themes and gaps in administrative policies and operational procedures. It intentionally does not name people's names and intentionally is, is, is looking at the bigger picture. For all the agencies that we reviewed, we looked at SOPs, SOGs, all the reports available, police, fire, Central County Emergency Dispatch. We looked at building permits for the original construction of the building. Was this building built to code, et cetera? We conducted two site visits as part of this investigation, including numerous follow-up phone calls and interviews. We talked to all the people here you see on the screen, or all the entities that you see on this screen. I would like to certainly take a second to just, you know, thank Rusty Leeds and we're here with the county and Dante Martin with the city for being our liaisons to getting all the information and access to everything we needed to do our analysis. So there's, of course, limitations to any analysis. I'm not going to go through all of them, but, you know, we relied upon the information that was given to us. We believe what we've done is, is comprehensive and very detailed, and we did so. We did this with discretion, investigative diligence, and professional respect. The last bullet there, our findings and recommendations, of course, are subject to change if provided with additional relevant and factual information. Through all of our interviews and all of our discussions with everyone, we've provided our emails, phone numbers, for anyone who didn't feel comfortable speaking in that moment, and so we do not expect that we would receive any additional information, but certainly open to that. So the report structure that you have, it goes into the background of all the agencies involved. It gives you review of the Brookhalo apartment complex itself to familiarize the reader with the geographic area that we're going to be talking about. It gives a narrative incident overview. We then go agency by agency and talk about the incident analysis relative to how that agency performed. We review and talk about their SOGs and SOPs, and we provide recommendations, agency by agency. The next section is essentially the conclusions and moving forward. How do we move forward together as a public safety system? And that gives all the overall conclusions. There are a number of appendices that includes some additional areas of study that came up with, the areas of study that we found that were not specifically related to the incident, but are things that we think that should be studied by the public safety system as a whole. All right. Before we get into the actual incident itself and go through a high level of that, I want to familiarize this group again with the complex at a very high level. So the Brookhalo apartment complex at 8165 East Central has a single-vehicle entry, which is on the northeast corner of the site. It's comprised of 12 two-story buildings. They're garden-style apartments with about 72 units in the entire complex. Each building has a single exit stairwell and a common weather-protected, it's commonly weather, it has a weather protection, but it is open. I will point out on this diagram you see before I forget that there was a very, on the morning of the 13th of October of 2023, there was a very strong wind coming from the northwest. Building 300 in the northwest corner of the complex is where this fire took place. That building has six about 580-square-foot, single-bedroom units. There are two per floor. Units are all provided with an ABC dry chemical fire extinguisher by management and a smoke alarm. The fire alarm system at the time of the fire, it's not provided, and it's not required by, by code in Wichita. We did get from MABCD the original permit application drawings and details and notes and handwritten notes from 1976, 1977, as well as the architectural drawings set. It's likely that this building was constructed to the 1973, 1976 Uniform Building Code or UBC. Our analysis showed the original construction complied with the building and the fire code at the time of construction. If this building were reconstructed from, from scratch today, automatic sprinklers today would be required inside the, inside the building. All right. So now we're going to go through the fire itself. So at approximately 3:58 a.m., Ms. Bedeski calls 911. She tells the call taker and dispatcher that her apartment is on fire. She lives at Brookhalo Apartments. She's unsure of the building address, but she is in Unit 306, and she provides her name. Ms. Bedeski asks for help. About 48 seconds after the call's answered, she does not speak again on the 911 call. A minute later, Wichita Fire Department is dispatched. We then have a call from residents in Unit 304 reporting the fire. Couple minutes later, Engine 15 requests a second alarm as they're already on the road. At that time, Ms. Bedeski's call disconnects from Central County 911. I think it's important to note here that before any fire companies are on the scene, two residents from Unit 304, two residents from Unit 305 jumped from windows to escape this fire. 301 exits through her front door to escape. At about 3:04, Engine 15 and Squad 15 are on the scene. They report heavy fire from the second floor. Couple minutes later, Battalion 3 from Wichita Fire Department takes incident command. At about 4:06, Unit 302, a friend of Unit 302, who's, the friend is not present on scene, calls 911 on behalf of the gentleman in Unit 302 and reports that he cannot self-evacuate. Additional fire companies arrive over the next several minutes. Dispatch reports a person trapped in Unit 302 about a minute after receiving the phone call about someone being trapped in Unit 302. Central County EMS Medic 2 hears, hears that radio traffic, and he actually preemptively responds himself and, and assigns two medics to respond to that call before he is notified, how do you say, before he is dispatched through tones over the radio. So once the Wichita Fire Department gets on scene, they, they're saying that the fire is reported in front of Units 304 and 305, and 303, 304, 305, and 306. So in this little diagram you see here, the green line of that line is, is the ground level, so the garden level is 301, 302. So on the stairway, that they're seeing the fire from 303, 304, 305, and 306. At 4:10, just a few minutes after the fire department arrives, portions of the roof of the stairway collapse on Engine 15 and Squad 15. They transmit a mayday over the radio, calling for help. Command reports, "Everyone get out of the building. We're going defensive," as an operational mode. Right around that time, as the stairway is collapsing, the fire department is actually rescuing someone out of Unit 302, the gentleman out of 302, Squad 14, and Tower 3, as that stairway is collapsing, and they back, as it's collapsing, they have to back back into his unit for a minute, let things stabilize, and then get him out. The Engine 15 officer, who was part of the mayday where the roof collapsed, he bailed out of the opening of the stairway enclosure. He had to self-rescue and make sure his nozzleman was able to get out as well via ground ladder. Incident Command did what's called a personal accountability report, which is to make sure all the firefighters are accounted for after a mayday. At about 4:20, Central County Emergency Communications Dispatch transmits their second, the second alarm for, that was requested many minutes before. Next, fire companies go back to check the top floor, the top floors of this building, which had not been searched before the stair collapsed. At about 4:21 to 4:24, Rescue 2 breaks the window into Unit 306, and three firefighters enter the bedroom. They find smoky, hot conditions in that room. After searching the bedroom and not finding anything, they continue their search into the living room area. At about 4:22 to 4:26, firefighter searching identifies a bathroom and finds a victim in the bathtub. Three firefighters work to get that victim out through that bedroom window. There's a firefighter from Engine 10 at the top of the ladder. The victim is handed to that firefighter who carries the victim, who is Ms. Bedeski, down the ladder, and they immediately start CPR. At about 4:34 a.m., Central County EMS transports the first patient to the hospital. Fire investigator shows up on scene. Central County EMS with the Wichita Fire Department are treating Ms. Bedeski at about 4:32. So this is when Central County EMS meets up with the fire department. In total, Central County EMS treats, treats, triages, treats, and transports four patients to the hospital, including Ms. Bedeski, who they transported at 4:54 a.m., and they arrived at the hospital about eight minutes later. And at about 4:58 a.m., EMS transports the last patient to the hospital. At that point, the fire department's putting out hotspots that they find. The fire investigators start to and begin to photograph and document the scene. At about 10:10, the fire investigators leave the scene, and at about 11:05 a.m., Engine 15, who was the first on scene with Squad 15, leaves the scene, and the call is considered complete at that point. All right. So now I'm going to start into the, our incident analysis and recommendations. I think it's first to, before we get into that, make a couple of statements. You know, after our review, Jensen Hughes found no single point of failure by any of the agencies involved that could be solely attributed to the vitality of Ms. Bedeski. Instead, we identified a number of systematic shortcomings that, when combined, contribute to an unorganized rescue effort. Had these significant shortcomings not occurred, it would have provided Ms. Bedeski with a better chance of early rescue and subsequent increased potential for survival, provided she was still alive. We found that the last known time Ms. Bedeski was alive was when she stopped talking, or we have evidence that she was alive, was when she stopped talking 48 seconds after she made her initial 911 call. So as we move forward, remember that Jensen Hughes cannot conclude that the shortcomings that we identified and we talk about in our report and talk about today, that those shortcomings of the public safety, safety system would not have absolutely changed the ultimate outcome of this fatal incident. So we're talking about that, what we found was that we, we, the public safety agencies could have affected the time in which search was conducted and the rescue was made. We cannot, we do not, we did not find evidence that that would have ultimately saved her With that, I'm going to ask Brian to come up.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Brian Nelson. I'll be speaking on the dispatch technology and some of the operational aspects of that. So we'll get going here. On the dispatch technology, the systems employed by SCEC are considered best-of-breed. To mention a couple of, of names, Motorola 911 phone system, Motorola radio systems. They have an enterprise version of TylerTech CAD and, and nice recorder. So these are all, in our industry, very, very best-of-breed type systems. The SOPs and SOGs, we reviewed and compare those to Apco and NINA standards. Those are the two governing bodies of our industry, and we reviewed and compared those at the time. I do believe there has been some updates to some of the SOPs and SOGs that we'll further get into as we go through the report. The SOPs and SOGs were thorough and well-organized, and they were up to date on the training. Training was well-planned, and there is a quality improvement program in place. As part of that training, dispatchers are broken into two functional groups, call-takers and dispatchers. On the training, to be a call taker, it takes a four-week academy, and then they start their on, on-the-job training. After, after that on-the-job training as a call taker, from three to six months, call taker may be promoted to dispatch one, which is the fire and dispatch capabilities. So they can be call takers and fire dispatchers. After nine to 12 months of training, a fully-trained dispatcher, dispatcher two, is put on the floor, and they can do all of the disciplines, fire, PD, EMS, dispatch, and call-taking. Little special note about the, the staff levels. At the time, the staff levels were at minimum staff, which is, is the way many dispatch centers run their operations, especially at that time of the day. Recently, Sedgwick County has been aggressively setting higher pay rates to effective, to be effective in the recruitment and retention of employees. Okay, and now the incident as it hits the dispatch center. The call came in, dispatch times were reviewed, the call was processed correctly and according to the Apco standard. There's a chart there over on the side where you can see the actual seconds and the actual times of the calls as they come through the system. Other 911 calls answered and entered, times reviewed, were also met the, met the standards for the Apco times as well. Calls from Unit 304 and the person calling on behalf of the resident 302 were both answered, again, within the standard benchmarks of that Apco standard. Ms. Bedeski's 911 call audio recording was reviewed, so the call taker dispatcher indicated that he could not understand the apartment unit number she provided, and therefore did not provide this information to the Wichita Fire Department. Hearing and understanding speech are affected by many factors, as we know, age, genetics, environment, cognitive factors, language, et cetera. Jensen Hughes listened to the recording release, can, and we can hear and understand Ms. Bedeski provided the unit number 306 twice. And to note also that Paoli's call to 911 said she needed help. She did not say that she was trapped. Okay, continuing on with her call and the call review. Hearing and understanding the speech also affected by technology, the quality of the audio, the quality of the playback device. We reviewed the technology and the hardware associated with the live call-taking, dispatching, recording, and playback. We determined that the quality of the audio recording, I'm sorry, sorry. We determined that the quality of the audio recording is pure, the signal captured prior to the hardware connected to the dispatcher headset. And as a technologist, I will tell you that there's backend systems and the, what the dispatcher here are different. Okay? We, and because of that, we sat down on one of our site visits and literally sat down and listened to the live calls and compared them to the recorded playback, and what we could hear is not what we heard on the headsets. There is a feature called instant recall that they have the ability to playback audio on some of the systems that they operate. This was not used by the dispatcher. This could have allowed the unit number to be understood and to relay this information to WFD. And that instant recall was available on the 911 phone system during the incident, but was not used. Okay, continuing on with the incident. There was a delay in dispatching the second alarm or upgrading the alarm. We determined that to be a training issue with CAD. Several dispatchers and the supervisor on staff were unsuccessful in assisting the dispatcher to get that second, second alarm going. Another dispatcher across the room overheard the conversation and was able to get the recommended units to appear in CAD and, and eventually dispatched the alarm. The issue, this issue was brought to the attention of the SCEC administration later in the morning, and they found that multiple dispatchers on multiple shifts could not recall how to do that, and within days of the incident, the administration arranged retraining for all staff on that issue. Okay, this makes a little bit more, brings into the idea of the technology sounding different on the backend than it does on, on what the dispatchers hear. We did note that the dispatch staff at Sedgwick County Dispatch wears two headsets. They are independently operated headsets with two microphones. Each one of those headsets is connected to a jackbox. One jackbox goes to the 911 phone system, and one jackbox or headset goes to the, the public safety radio system. So listening and understanding to two different sounds coming into each ear, or dichotic listening, was thought to be one area that might have caused some confusion for dispatchers in this incident. And again, we did sit down and listened on our own to the radio traffic in two different areas, and it was very difficult and almost impossible to completely comprehend both. Preference to one ear seemed to always need to be given. Now, that being said, SCEC dispatch has operated with dual headsets for many years, and undoubtedly call-taker dispatchers in this area have become better at dichotic listening through And from that, I will turn it over to Vern.
Good morning, Commissioners, Vern Champlin, Jensen Hughes. At this point in the presentation, we're going to dig into the City of Wichita Fire Department's operational response and strategy and tactics on the fire ground. Now, I do want to point out, much like Brian, I'm going to pretty much read these slides, and that's intentional. We all know, and we've all been taught, that's not the way to give a presentation, but that's intentional to ensure that the same message reaches the city staff and the city fire department. So we initially started this process by, by trying to divide the elements of the fire-ground operation into, into five elements, and those elements here, you'll notice, are in the image. And I'm going to start with that and say that those elements are fire, water supply and fire attack, search and rescue, mayday command, and deployment, deployment meaning getting staff there to the scene. These five elements, although we've attempted to separate them and kind of talk about them individually, it's very important to understand that they are intricately related, they overlap, and so as we break these down, you're going to hear some of the same comments in each of these siloed discussions. We started our analysis in this project in looking at the policies and procedures. We evaluated policies and procedures related to each one of these five elements against NFPA standards, other organizations and departments' policies and procedures, and just industry best practices. Wichita Fire Department's operational manual, which will be further referred to as OM, was thorough, well-organized, and up to date. However, we found numerous Wichita Fire Department operational policies that were not followed at this incident. Fire-ground operations in this incident are in these five sections. Fire ground operations in this incident are in these five sections. So, the basis for deployment is NFPA 1710. It's known as the standard of organizational deployment for fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations and special operations by public, to the public by career fire departments. That particular standard really presents two elements, fire department response, deployment, and that is total response time and total effective response force. Total response time has to do with essentially three elements. It's the time that it takes the first arriving engine to get from the station to the incident, the second arriving incident from the station to the incident, and then the response time of the total effective response force. So, total effective response force is the concept of assembling an adequate number of firefighters to suppress a fire at a particular type of hazard. In this particular hazard, we're talking about a garden level apartment building and NFPA 1710 identifies a minimum of 28, and I, I stress the number, minimum, minimum number of 28 firefighters necessary to meet the standard to response of a garden level apartment I should, let's, let's go ahead and break this down. So, Wichita Fire Departments responded to this incident within each of the benchmark response times for the first engine, the second engine and the total effective response force. Wichita Fire Department assembled the total effective response force within the benchmark time and you can see the times there. I should also note that Wichita Fire Department's deployment to, to this apartment, structure fire, is the same for trapped and, there's not a word for it, untrapped. If a structure fire is reported at garden level apartment, the response deployment is the same by, by the run card, by the number of units and staff that the fire department sends to a garden level apartment. Strategy and tactics of those fire ground operations are not made from the dispatch center. Those fire ground operations, strategy and tactics are made by the incident commander once on scene. Prioritization of strategy and tactics. So, there's a lot of information here in this slide. First of all, let's just kind of look at the map. We were not provided a, an incident diagram. Unsure if that's available or not, we did, we were not provided that. But you can get a pretty good sense here of where response units were positioned on the scene and the little black circles with the number is actually the arrival order of those units to the scene. It's important to note here, the green dashed line around the northwest and south side of the complex, that is actually a, a six-foot wood privacy fence. And it does have, I believe it had, at the time of the incident, it had one hole in the fence, a pass-through and maybe the width of a person, just a personnel access point. And then throughout the incident, there was additional sections of the fence removed to kind of open that up. But initially, there was a privacy fence with one very small hole through it. You'll also notice that there's actually response units located on the west side of that privacy fence. You'll notice on the east side of the apartment complex there, where it's kind of the pin is, there's a swimming pool there at the pin, just kind of to the east and a little bit north is actually the fire hydrant symbol, that's a fire hydrant located on the scene. We'll talk more about that in a moment. So, you may want to refer back to this as we talk. So, the table on the right is actually the response order of arriving units. And the first two columns have to do with the engine. An engine in a fire service has some specific jobs primarily related to fire suppression activities with a pump and a tank, et cetera, to conduct fire suppression operations. The second, the next two columns, the white columns are the truck and rescue response times and order. Trucks and rescue have another kind of specific set of operational function on the fire ground related to search and rescue, ventilation, forcible entry. The next set of columns is the squad arrivals. That's a unique system that the City of Wichita deploys to diversify their response model. Those are two-person response apparatus that, to my understanding, typically responds either alone to low acuity, low acuity events or with the associated engine to more complex incidents. And then on the far right two columns, you'll see the arrival of battalion chiefs and fire investigators, just additional units arrival. If you'll notice here, the first, one through seven, there were actually seven units on the scene before incident command was established. Seven units on scene before incident command was formally established. You'll also notice that with the addition of the three units after that, unit arrival number eight, nine and 10, that actually put the 28 number of firefighters on scene. So, there's 18 firefighters on scene before command is established and then 28 firefighters are on scene, meeting the NFPA standard for a garden level apartment in about six minutes from the dispatch time, which is a very quick response by national standards, a very quick response to have 28 people on scene. You'll also notice that when the, when the second alarm was actually dispatched, when it, Brian already pointed out that it was delayed in being dispatched. However, when it was finally dispatched, there were already 41 Wichita firefighters on the scene. And then ultimately, at the end of the incident, the very last row, you'll notice that there was 58 personnel on scene, firefighting personnel. Okay, so that was deployment. Let's talk a little bit about water supply and fire attack. This wood-framed, non-sprinklered, high-density residential occupancy is served by a dead-end water main with one fire hydrant on a dead-end road. These conditions warrant extensive pre-incident planning. However, the Wichita Fire Department's provided pre-incident plan is weak. The first arriving engine, which was engine 15, did not lay a supply line per the operations manual, thus requiring other units to handjack large diameter hose, time-consuming process. The operational manual directs the second arriving engine to not stage and establish a water supply to the first engine. Engine nine arrived and staged at a hydrant on central. Engine 14, the third arriving engine, initiated the water supply plan. Engine 14 attempted originally to come in from the west but was blocked by the fence. So, they decided to take the hydrant within the complex there next to the swimming pool that I pointed out. However, truck five was already parked in front of the hydrant. Truck five had begun deploying their outriggers and were moving tools to their basket when they were directed by engine 14 to reposition, causing additional water supply delays. Initial crews deployed three fire attack lines, two, two-and-a-half inch and one inch and three-quarter simultaneously from engine 15, 600 gallon water tank, onboard water tank, without a continuous water supply being established. Fire suppression was stalled and crews were put at risk when engine 15 ran out of tank Firefighters were in the stairway without water when the roof partially collapsed and the mayday was transmitted. The rapid advancement up the stairs suggests that those initial crews were operating in what the operational manual calls fast attack rescue mode, despite the fact that fire attack mode had been declared by squad 15, which requires an IRIC or a RIC per the operations manual. A continuous water supply was eventually established from the onsite hydrant by engine 14. The chosen approaches to water supply and fire attack impacted the timing in which the victim may have been removed from her apartment. It's recommended that consider limiting the number and size of handlines permitted to flow water from a booster tank before water supply is established. We'll move on to search and rescue. Per the O M, searches should generally begin closest to the fire area and work back from there. Let me say this, firefighters are trained to save lives and they should do this regardless of what dispatch relays or what a panicked civilian says. Interviews with the Wichita Fire Department confirmed that firefighters knew there was a high life hazard on floors above the first floor garden level when they arrived. Given the time of day, they assumed every occupant, every, every apartment was occupied and until it was confirmed not to be. Since it was a single stairway, one way in and one way out, vent enter search is an effective method to conduct quick searches in accordance with the O M. But there was no indication that V E S was performed on any apartments. The first 911 caller was Ms. Badeski in 306, who reported needing help but did not indicate she was trapped. Approximately three minutes after Wichita Fire Department arrived on scene, Sedgwick County Emergency Communications announced over the ops channel that one person was trapped, coming from 302. It was actually the friend of the person in 302. Some fire companies arrived and self-assigned or were directed by command to search uninvolved buildings before crews completed the search of building 300. Now, you may want to flip back to your overall site diagram there. But from the fire building 300, we did receive, and you'll see it in the further, the more in-depth report, there was communications regarding searches occurring in, in building 200, building 400, as well as the backside, and that's the term that was used, backside. We assume that meant units 1100 and 1200. Searches going on in 200, 400, 1100 and 1200 before building 300 was complete. Crews searching uninvolved buildings diluted the number of resources available to search Per the O M, during a mayday, no fire ground assignment should be abandoned. The incident commander will direct and/or redirect all operations. It's reasonable to assume that the incident commander needed some time to gain control of the situation and start to work through the mayday checklist. Search and rescue was eventually reprioritized after the mayday was stabilized and the primary searches were complete for the remaining building 300, specifically the units 305 and 306. Ms. Badeski was found unresponsive in 306 and brought down as previously mentioned. Since EMS is not automatically assigned to a structure fire response unless someone is reported trapped, the Wichita Fire Department must be prepared to triage and treat victims until they can be transferred to EMS. Recommendations, searches should begin closest to the fire area per the operations manual. An immediate arrival of truck companies to a residential fire should employ prioritized search and rescue as an immediate action, closest to the fire, of opportunities that target a known or high probability area of trapped subjects, again, per the O M. Now, we'll move into command and control. Command and control of an apartment fire involves the organized management and coordination of firefighting efforts through the incident command system, this is a national system, which defines a clear hierarchy and chain of command. It begins with a size-up where the incident commander conducts an initial assessment of the situation to gauge the fire's extent, identify potential hazards and understand the building layout. Effective resource management is critical as personnel and equipment must be allocated appropriately with priority tasks assigned to firefighters and coordination with additional emergency responses as needed. Once on scene, the incident commander determines the incident strategy, which may include coordinated ventilation, fire attack and search and rescue priorities. The first arriving units did not assume command as they engaged in fast attack search mode. However, as additional units arrived, no one established incident command per the O M until the seventh unit, being battalion three. Six units arrived on the scene before command was eventually established. Effective communication between incident command and fire ground operations is essential. Once interior searches were underway, neither an inner, initial rapid intervention crew in IRIC or a rapid intervention crew were formally established by the operations manual. And remember, a few slides ago, the, the IRIC or the RIC is, it's really about rescuing the firefighters, right? That's the resources dedicated to be able to quickly affect a rescue of a downed firefighter. Incident command's action or inaction can have a significant impact on the outcome of any incident. In this incident, command was not well organized and appeared more reactive than proactive. Here's five examples, there's others in the report, but here's five examples of deficient command and control. An engine staged at a contingency water supply was, as required per the O M, was directed to reposition and search an uninvolved building, building 200. Numerous units were allowed to freelance without clear assignment or incident coordination. Allowing companies to search uninvolved buildings before the high priority area closest to the fire. When the mayday occurred, incident command switched to a defensive operation, thus pulling all interior resources out of the building, de-prioritized search operations and did not manage the mayday tac radio communications per the operations manual. Command did not broadcast critical fire incident benchmarks that we utilize to keep an incident on track, those being water supply established, primary, secondary searches complete, fire under control, et cetera, as required per the O M. Recommendations include examine recent fire incidents, determine if incident command is normally effective. Recommendation failure to communicate fire scene benchmarks results in a lack of adequate fire ground management, announce incident benchmarks to the dispatcher via the ops channel. I may have, was I on the wrong slide there? I may have missed you on a slide. All right. Mayday, we'll move to mayday now. A mayday is an emergency incident occurring within an emergency incident. It represents a critical moment when firefighter is in distress and requires assistance due to life-threatening circumstances. A mayday must be treated with the same level of priority and structured response as the initial incident. A dual focus is necessary to manage the mayday while maintaining the ongoing incident, ensuring a comprehensive response to both challenges. When the mayday occurred, there was no initial, initial rapid intervention crew or rapid intervention, or rapid intervention crew formally established. Incident command did not upgrade the alarm when the mayday occurred as required per the O M. There was no direction from command regarding if the mayday incident was to remain on the tac channel in which the fire ground operation was occurring and other units were to change to channel per the O M. As a result, there were numerous times that other non-critical radio traffic walked on the mayday incident. Command did not provide status updates as the incident progressed on the ops channel, nor did command announce when the mayday was complete as required per the O M. The handling of the mayday impacted the timing in which the victim may have been able to be removed from her apartment. Although the mayday was resolved quickly, there is evidence that managing a mayday is not well practiced by the Wichita Fire Department, incident command or firefighters. Interviews with firefighters associated with this incident revealed that most of them could not recall the last time a multi-company mayday training was completed. The recommendation is to conduct mayday training. Design complex training scenarios that include multi-company operations where search and rescue, fire suppression and rescue operations are being conducted when the simulated mayday This is a little bit of a transition outside of the immediate operational incident, but this is the Wichita Fire Department's fire investigation to this incident. Jensen Hughes was provided with limited information regarding the investigation. Findings and recommendations should be considered as complete as possible at this time. The fire investigation unit noted the origin to be the exterior stairwell of building three, in or around the landing of units 303 and 304. And it's, to the best of our knowledge, they still have the investigation marked as under investigation. And to the best of our knowledge, they still have the investigation marked as under investigation. The Fire Investigation Unit may lack adequate training to perform investigations in accordance with internationally accepted practices and procedures based upon our findings. Five examples of these inadequacies include: Scene photograph is not systematic or complete; Evidence that was sent to testing did not include control samples; Photographs of samples tested not in context with the exact location they were taken; No scene diagram was provided; Significant lacking in supplemental reports and follow-up investigation actions. Origin and cause investigation report should have been completed by now, even if undetermined with a discussion of competing causes of hypothesis. And with that, I'll turn it back over to John.
Thank you very much. I'm going to transition to Sedgwick County EMS. Sedgwick, as I mentioned before, Sedgwick County EMS provided triage treatment and transport of up to four patients for this fire. The first arriving units had a difficult time identifying an area to access the scene, or first to access the scene. We've talked about how getting into the complex was difficult, but also identify, they had a difficult time identifying victims. The other thing that really kind of put SEMS at a disadvantage is that they're not dispatched to these fires unless someone is reported as trapped. Triage was not set up by anyone prior to SEMS arriving on scene, but there's nothing in Sedgwick County EMS or the Wichita Fire Department's Operations Manual for the responsibility of determining patient triage areas, or who initiates a medical branch on a fire scene. So their documents, their operations manuals talk about how to do it on some other types of emergency incidents, but not on a fire scene. So this really, these things put SEMS at a disadvantage. I'll refer to NFPA 1710 again, which Vern talked about, about response time. And NFPA 1710 actually requires that on an apartment fire, that you dispatch an EMS vehicle that can transport patients or firefighters on that initial alarm. So currently, the current response of SEMS does not meet NFPA 1710. We have a strong recommendation of following that and dispatching a transport unit on reported structure fires, specifically structure fires like apartment fires or high-rise apartment residential fires where there's potential for high loss of life. The EMS district chief was, per their protocols, was listening to the fire. They are notified of a structure fire, they're not unaware of it, but the district chief is listening to four different radios and, or four different channels and listening for what's going on. And he did, I mentioned before, self-dispatch before dispatch actually toned the other medics out, because he heard the report of a trapped person in Unit 302. So again, we really believe that strongly that the EMS system should provide an ambulance on fires where there's high life safety risk, and these are two examples. Moving to the Wichita Police Department. The Wichita Police Department is also not automatically due on a fire structure call. They did play a relatively small, but not inconsequential, but relatively small role in the incident. They assisted with a belligerent individual on the scene. They did traffic management as per usually what they're asked to do, and they assisted the Fire Investigations Unit with interviewing victims. However, we feel that this is a missed opportunity. Wichita Police Department, they're on the street 24/7 a day. They know these geographic areas better than I think any part of the public safety system. If they were due on a report to structure fire, and not tied up doing maybe something more important that a police officer would be doing, but they could offer an initial size up, they could manage traffic control ahead of that to make sure the fire department can get in, and they can help a little bit with scene safety. Maybe more importantly, they can assist in alerting occupants of danger. They could be clearing out parts of an apartment building that are not within what we call the IDLH atmosphere, or the area that's immediately dangerous to life and health. They could be getting those people out and allow the fire department to work in that IDLH atmosphere. They also, if they're due on an initial scene, and let's say that initial scene turns out to be possibly criminal, they're there to help identify potential witnesses and make other critical observations as they do on their own emergency incidents. We strongly recommend that the Wichita Police Department and the Fire Department work together to develop policies and procedures for assisting each other on fire scenes, following the International Association of Chiefs of Police Model Policy, which they have. So there's a policy out there, it's actually a two-page policy, that provides specific ways that they can help on these scenes, but also make sure the police, you know, where they should stay away from on a structured fire. All right. Now to our key findings. All right, on the left-hand side here, Sedgwick County believes, or sorry, Jensen Hughes believes that the Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Dispatcher could not understand what Ms. Bedeski was saying when she stated her apartment number. We've talked about the difference between what can be heard on the recording and the technical difference between that and what you can hear when you're sitting in the seat with a headset or two on. However, that dispatcher did not use instant recall feature, which was available. This may have allowed him to better understand and relay that information to the fire department. Number two, Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Dispatch requested second alarm with significant delay. However, we found that the Wichita Fire Department had an adequate number of firefighters on scene to conduct fire ground operations of a garden-style apartment before that second alarm was dispatched. And number three, we found that the Wichita Fire Department's decisions associated with initial fire attack, an uncoordinated search and rescue effort, ineffective command and control, in addition to the unfortunate partial collapse of the stairway in mayday, delayed search efforts. Our analysis was highly focused on the various public safety agencies involved, but we cannot ignore the other factors outside of any of these agencies' control, which we'll talk about here on the right-hand side. There was past evidence that we found of inappropriately discarded smoking materials in, around, and on Building 300's exit stairway prior to this fire. That's exit stairway, it's combustible construction, it's geometry, and the wind conditions that morning played a significant factor that had nothing to do with any of the public safety agencies here. We found evidence on Ms. Bedeski's social media in the weeks leading up, in the weeks leading up to the incident, where you can hear in the video the distinct sound of a low battery on her, a smoke alarm in her apartment. I must say, we must say, that it's unknown if that detector was working properly at the time of the incident. We do not know if she changed the battery, but that is a factor that we found that could potentially have led down this path. In reviewing the available scene photographs from the fire department, patterns of fire impingement on the exterior doors of all the units of Building 300, you know, focusing in on that and trying to look at the differences between those suggests that possibly the door of Unit 302 may have become open at some time, especially relative to all the other unit doors, looking at the damage, oh, sorry, 306, thank you, sorry. We think that the Unit 306 door may have become open at some time. We don't know when that was or how that occurred, but that door opening itself or becoming open would have an impact on what's going on inside that apartment. And then unfortunately, we don't know why, but Ms. Bedeski, she decided to retreat to her windowless bathroom, and that is a contributing factor that resulted in this unfortunate fatality. The fire exposure to Unit 305, because of the wind direction, was far more severe than to Unit 306. And the Unit 305 residents were in there, they made it back to their bedroom, and yes, they jumped from their bedroom window and sustained some injuries, but they survived. So we cannot ignore that as a contributing factor to this incident. All right, so there are a number of opportunities for improvement. In this presentation, we've only provided some of the findings and recommendations that are included in this report. We did find findings and recommendations to improve upon each and every public safety agency that you see here listed for the city and the county throughout this report. But before you can work on those things, we need to talk about some underlying challenges. The path forward for Sedgwick County, the city of Wichita, and the other local public safety system agencies that are in this county need to put prior differences aside and start working together, develop strong working relationships, and rebuild trust to better serve the communities here in Sedgwick County. There's been longstanding tension and animosity between Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Dispatch and some of the agencies it served, undermining the trust and respect of everyone involved, really to foster stronger working relationships and better serve the county and the city. It's crucial, like I mentioned, to move past these grievances, whether they're real or perceived or happened a decade or two ago, and focus on building a foundation of understanding trust and cooperation. That's number one. Public safety systems as a whole survive when collaboration exists between neighboring agencies, driving development, innovation between them. However, in the case of Wichita Police and the Sedgwick County Emergency Communications and EMS, the lack of nearby comparable advancing agencies fosters a bit of complacency. Due to this geographic isolation where we are, agencies must intentionally seek out professional relationships beyond the boundaries of this local area that will contribute to improved service delivery. We think that the public safety system should seek benchmarking, looking at other jurisdictions around the country, and see how their public safety system works, and accreditation methods, looking for accreditation as a way to continuously evaluate itself against similar systems. The final underlying challenge we uncovered was that the Fire Department, Wichita Fire Department, appears to lack an emphasis on self-reflection and accountability within its culture. If they were to foster a culture rooted in humility, collaboration, and continuous improvement, it could really enhance its services and strengthen its ability to meet the city's needs effectively. All right. With that...
Okay, John, thank you so much for your team and this presentation. We appreciate it. There are questions. Commissioners, fire away, any questions? Why don't I, I'll start with one. I have several questions. I want to start, and I don't know if Brian, since you gave the presentation on 911, there was something you mentioned about dichotic listening, and that what we hear from the recording is a clearer or cleaner version of what's being heard in the ears of those that are dispatching. Simple question, you know, we have, in 2023, had nine call takers, and we're going to end 2024 with 32 call takers, and we're working towards a model that has separate dispatching and call taking completely. Is that a recommendation that will help in this dichotic listening challenge to separate call takers and dispatchers? This is what we're working towards. We want to know that this recommendation is something that you see will help with this.
It is, especially the size of Sedgwick County Dispatch Center, as big as you are you can, support a call taker dispatcher model with the single headset for the phone, and then the dispatcher side would have the single headset for the radio. Across the nation, we do see the minimum staffing issues and things that lead a call taker to become a dispatcher when staff levels are low. So we still want to push Sedgwick County into looking at moving to a single headset for all of the dispatch and call taker staff to, we have not seen, I have not seen in my experience of 30 years in public safety where a dispatch center uses two headsets. So it's very unique to us to see that.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I want to kind of follow up on that, a line of thinking. There's been a lot of criticism that the call taker didn't use the instant recall to be able to play it back, but some of the statements that you made earlier says that the recording is clearer than what they're hearing in their headset. If you use the instant recall, is the recording clearer in the headset, or is it the same distortion as they had before?
Unfortunately, it is the same distortion because of the way it comes from the, and I say backend, the digital recording of the systems that are coming in from the telephone carrier are recorded in a digital fashion before they come through many, many wires and get to the headsets, and then you add on the double headsets on top of that with the audio coming in maybe from the radio system while you're trying to play back the audio from the phone system. And, you know, not to put Scott here on the spot here, but as a person that sat in the chair for a while, sometimes even the instant recall, playing it back over and over, still won't get you the, any better understanding of what has happened.
Okay. Well, there's been some criticism that I've heard that said that they should have played it back right away and either picked up who was 306. So is that a valid criticism that they would have heard that if they played it back?
Our recommendation is that they should have used that technology in order to help them better understand what was happening, and we do not know why that was not used. The recommendation is to use instant recall. Instant recall at Sedgwick County is available in three different flavors. We have instant recall for the phone, we have instant recall for the radio, and then their official recorder, the NICE recording system, captures all of the audio from all of those systems. That system also has the ability to recall audio.
But again, there's a lot going on at that point in time, and I can't understand why that it would be so much clearer if they heard it over and over again, because you've already testified that it's not any better quality than when they heard it the first time.
That's correct.
It could have been just the repeated listening of it. He could have possibly picked that up. Can't say for sure if he would have. He could have still had other radio traffic coming in his ear at the same time, or he may have had nothing going on at that time where the initial phone call, he may have had other things going on around him in the room.
Okay, so if you listened to all of the different recordings this dispatcher was working with, how many other things was he involved in?
There was a lot going on in that room at that time.
So are you saying that they should have stopped doing everything they'll say were doing and started replaying this back over and over again?
I would, if I was sitting in that chair, I would have replayed it, because he knew she, he knew she said an apartment number, he didn't get it. So until you've got that, you don't have all their information. So in my opinion, he should have continued to try and get that information until he had it.
And when the fire department shows up, if they don't have an apartment number, I think that you've already told us that they should go to where the point of the fire is the first.
Correct.
Is that what they did?
At four in the morning, you know, like we said, it's assumed that all those apartments are occupied.
Okay. And is that what they did? Did they go to the point of the fire where the...
They did start to attack that fire in the stairwell.
So again, Vernon Champlin, I think this is where these conversations get very complex. There's a lot of layerings to this, but even operationally speaking, we've got truck companies, we've got rescues, we've got engines, we've got task assignments. Initial fire ground operations engaged in fire attack, within a few minutes, there were truck companies, and the, per the OM and per fire dynamics, we know that fire burns up and out. So fires that are located on the second, third floor, in that particular scenario, the most hazardous environment is not the first floor, right? Because fire's burning up and out from that. However, some resources supported rescue operations on the first floor, other rescue operations... operations supported other buildings. And so there no was not a direct intensity of prioritization of rescue operations per the OM on the second and third floors.
And finally, I'm kind of surprised that the amount of time has gone by and we still don't know what the cause of the fire is. Is there any reason that we don't know what caused the fire at this point?
I'm not sure that I can actually answer that question. There are strategic reasons that organizations sometimes hold fire cases open, waiting for lab results or processes to take place, but we don't have an official cause of this fire at this time, and that definitely was a hindrance to our research.
I just want to tell you all, thank you very much for the report. We appreciate it. This is something that was needed. This was a tragic incident. We have the loss of life in this incident. We always have to be cognizant of that and pray for her family and for her, but thank you so much for doing this investigation. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Vern. Question, a quick follow up on Commissioner Dennis's last question on the investigation piece. I understand there's not a cause or origin of fire determined at this point. Was the fire investigation handled as a suspicious death or a possible homicide until proven otherwise? And if yes or no, and if not, should it have been?
We, there's a lot of information lacking in the information we received there. I think, just as a comparable and contrast, a significant fire incident, meaning a civilian fatality and a firefighter mayday, should be an incident to cause great scrutiny and concern of scene documentation, lessons learned, and processes necessary to seek out the truth and prosecute if necessary. It's concerning to me that the fire investigation unit actually left, I believe it was about 45 minutes even before Engine 15 cleared the scene. Now, I will tell you, they did go to the hospital to do some interviews, but the scene was essentially released. The scene wasn't released until Wichita Fire cleared the scene with the final unit, but the fire investigators left the scene, both of them, in my opinion, very early.
So is this fire being investigated as a suspicious death or a possible homicide?
I don't have the answer to that. It's still under investigation, so.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the report. It's been great to see some great analysis been done. I don't even know where to begin. I have so many questions. I know we have to end this at 10:30. I hate to hog the microphone here, but I agree with Commissioner Dennis's questions earlier. I would say, how many call takers or dispatchers were on duty at the time that this fire happened?
So they were at their minimum staffing. So they were at their minimum staffing, which I believe was 10.
10 people.
So that's 10 people for all of the elements.
How many calls came in, it started at 3:58. How many calls came in during the next, let's say, one hour for 15, 20 minutes? Do we have a list of those calls?
I do not have that number for you right now.
If you do a playback, do you have to stop taking calls and dispatching while you do that?
You would have to, because you have that coming in your headset, so.
So this person was listening to that call for a little while after it went silent?
Right.
Trying to get them to respond. Had they had to go listen to that 306?
Correct.
Try to hear that, they would have had to stop listening to that call.
He should have been able to replay that on his console while he was still on that call.
So you don't have to stop?
He wouldn't, he wouldn't take another call while he was trying to take that, but he should have been able to.
So you can stay on that call while you do a playback?
Correct.
You can stay on that call while you do a playback?
Correct.
Okay. That's, I didn't know how that worked. Okay.
You know, with all the information coming in around him with apartment numbers and this and that, you know, he may have felt that they had enough information?
There was some early reporting that talked about some of the beeps that were heard on the audio and not knowing what those beeps were. Has that ever been determined what those were?
No, no.
So they not generate, those did not generate from any of our system?
No. As far as, as far as we know, they were possibly coming from the phone.
Okay. And then there was some discussion early on about they could have used to get some GPS mapping of some sort to find out. Again, I see that 306 is over 304, which is over 302.
Correct.
Is it accurate enough to have looked at that and been able to, you know, to write some information to firefighters?
So the technology for 911 location is divided in two different main areas. There's the carrier responsibility for delivering what we call wireless phase one and phase two. That's the initial tower location. Phase one is where the call connects to the initial tower. Phase two, which can generally happen 15 to 30 seconds after the initial call is answered, uses a technology called triangulation, which takes a number of towers into account. Your phone knows and looks into all these towers. It can guess through triangulation a more accurate location, but it's still a one-dimensional, not three-dimensional, floor-wise area. We have recently, well, recently 10, 10 years, we've been deploying a technology called Rapid SOS, which literally uses the phone's GPS chip in there. The carriers do not use your GPS chip. They use that in phase one and phase two. The Rapid SOS technology, which Sedgwick County does use in numerous locations in their systems, does provide a better location, but it's still not elevation-wise. And we did note that the phase one location did plot right on top of the apartment complex.
And again, there's three apartments on that same location, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The second, the request for a second alarm call, was that made once they were on scene or was they were arriving on scene?
Believe that was made while they were en route.
They weren't even there yet?
Yeah.
It was made twice. It was made while they were coming down Rock Road, and it was made again when Engine 15 arrived on the scene.
And again, so the first call for a second alarm, they could see the fire from Rock Road. They knew this was a big fire.
Yeah, they said they could see the fire from Rock Road.
And considering some apartment complexes at four in the morning, they thought it would be really smart to have a second alarm call. Okay. And I agree, I agree with that. That's the same data that I've got. On page, I don't know what, I guess on slide number 23, you have a really great slide about the NFPA standards for an apartment fire, requires a minimum of 27 or 8, you want to count it 28, if air devices used. Is there a response time listed in that to NFPA standards for an apartment fire? And second of all, I'd like to have the same information for a second alarm call. So I'm asking about this one, a time response requirement, is that just standard protocols for Sedgwick County or Wichita Fire, or is it different for an apartment fire? And then second of all, what's the response standards, if you will, for a second alarm?
So these response times, the first arriving engine is supposed to be on site in four minutes. And where that gets a little complicated is that's four minutes 90% of the time. So when you look at an entire community geographic region, there's some statistics that go in there. Second arriving pumper is on scene within six minutes, and the total effective response force for garden-level apartment is eight minutes.
Okay. Okay, so again, we met all those standards in this response, it looks like to me. There was no time deficiency here. What about for the second alarm call? How many firefighters are required, how many response units and firefighters are required for the second alarm call?
So that's going to be different depending on jurisdiction, because sometimes that can come within the primary organization. Sometimes filling out a second alarm may require automatic or mutual aid partners, right? You're going out in layers of the circle.
Right.
And so there is not a standard for the second alarm response, because you may be coming from quite a geographical distance away.
Right. And in this case, again, you already, I think you stated this already, but there were 17 units that responded and 41 personnel on scene before the second alarm call was dispatched. Am I saying that right?
Correct, yeah.
And you say in here, I think, I don't know if I read it in here somewhere, but that was considered a sufficient response. Even if they had dispatched a second alarm call, to have 17 arriving vehicles and 41 personnel, that would be essentially not any greater numbers necessarily based on the second alarm call dispatched.
Yeah, they had, they had a second alarm response on scene before the second alarm actually was dispatched. This is, it's again, difficult to say, because in other communities across Kansas, there's fire departments that can't assemble 28 people in 15, 20, 30 minutes sometimes, depending on the location. Here locally, though, you assembled the total effective response force as established by NFPA 1710 very quickly, and you had, my eyesight, and I apologize. The 41 firefighters on scene when the second alarm, which was dispatched, which exceeds the standard for an effective response force for garden-level apartments.
So I don't think you stated it in here anywhere. Maybe I missed it, but just from my anecdotal opinion, by looking at the picture on slide number 14, and I went by and took pictures, by the way, I have lots of pictures of this fire, but it looks to me like the hottest part of this is in the enclosed stairwell centered to the top two apartments. And if I was going to just split hairs here, I'd say it looks like 305, which is on the left side of the picture, is, looks to me like it's the hottest part of that fire. And I state that because you'll notice that the windows on 303, 304, and especially on 301, 302, the windows appear to be intact. They don't appear to be burned at all. If I was arriving on the scene, and I think you stated this earlier, if you were going to do a search and rescue, if you can make entry, if you can make entry safely without putting the life of the firefighter into a grave situation, if you will, then you should have gone into, it looks to me like at least 305 and 306, as, you know, as your very initial effort on this building.
Yeah.
Those are the two areas you would have gone into first. And it looks to me like they focused on other buildings and as well as going from bottom up in this. And in fact, I have data, I think you stated it here, people in 304 jumped out before they arrived, 305 jumped out before they arrived, but they did not necessarily know where they were. So they potentially would have had to think, we might need to go into those apartments and verify if there's someone in there or not. So as they're arriving, what are their thoughts? What are they supposed to do when they get there based on the standards?
So I think you bring up some excellent points, sir, and I agree with some of your observations here. And I think the best thing I could say is this is exactly why we do not develop strategies and tactics from the dispatch center. We develop strategies and tactics by establishing an early and effective incident command, establishing incident priorities, and deploying resources to complete those tactics to achieve those strategic priorities. That's done in the street, but I agree with you. 306, 305, 304, and 303 appear to be the areas most immediately near the fire and should have received prioritization of search and rescue efforts.
And we knew someone was trapped in 302, and they did go in there and rescue 302. And I understand he cleared the stairwell right before it collapsed. 301, they were able to get on their own. 304 jumped, 305 was, I should say, 303, I think, was burned in the process, and 305 jumped to the ground and was injured in their fall. Some of that was not known. I just stated a lot of data there that they didn't necessarily, didn't necessarily know that on the scene, but they show up there. One of the arguments is, you know, if they would have known 306 was someone trapped, they would have gone in there and done something. My question is, could they have safely gone into 306 when they got there, four minutes after the fire was reported, gives them a few minutes to respond with some type of search and rescue response? Could they have safely entered 306 at that time?
So the short answer is yes. The longer answer is it's a little bit more complicated than that. If you'll notice with your photograph, the bedroom on the far right, 306, has hardly any impediment of fire conditions on that window at all, and would absolutely be a prime candidate for vent inter search operations per the operations manual. Why the decision was made to not conduct a VES in 306 and to allow search priorities to occur in adjacent uninvolved buildings, I do not understand. Now with that caveat, let me say this. Vent inter search tactics typically are confined to this. You ladder the building, you make an entry, you close the door, you isolate that door, and you search that area. If conditions warrant, you may open up, say, that bedroom door, look into the hall, maybe extend a little further, but I have no confidence that even if VES was conducted in 306, assuming that potentially the exterior door to 306 was compromised and fire and smoke conditions were entering 306, that a VES search would have resulted in getting to the bathroom and finding the victim. I don't know. What I do know is that VES was not performed in 306, a prime candidate location based upon the urgency of the fire.
And so, yeah, I think it comes down to either they could have made entry and they should have made entry and they didn't, we don't know why, or they could not have made entry, which means knowing there was someone in there wouldn't have made a difference necessarily. And by the way, I would like to just, I want to also stress, I think everyone in this entire incident did the very best they could. This is unfortunate, you know, hindsight's 2020 when you look backwards. We're armchair quarterbacking what could have happened.
Yes, sir.
Everyone in that moment did the best they could, and no one wanted anybody to suffer or have human loss, certainly not that. We want to make sure our firefighters and everyone involved are protected in the process. I believe everyone did the very best they can, the very best they could, including our 911 personnel. And so it's easy to look backwards and say what we should have done differently. I also like to, you know, just say, I grieve for the loss of Paley Bodeski. I don't know that anything we did or did not do necessarily changed the outcome of her ultimate passing, and it's unfortunate to say that. So I think that's in the report here. I think you basically clarified that, that's your opinion as well. I'll stop talking for just a minute, I know some people want to talk, so I have other questions, but I'll stop for a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
I'd follow up just on Commissioner Howell's point. Vernon, begin thinking about some of the environment happening inside these apartments. I'm not sure with what confidence you can answer this question, but I think it's worth it's worth asking. Paley stopped talking after 50 seconds on the call. The call was terminated shortly thereafter that. Did her apartment, based on what you know of this fire and the investigation, did her apartment provide a survivable environment at that point in time when she stopped talking?
It's very difficult to know. The investigation photographs, information provided is very limited. This is, this sounds like a cop-out answer, but I'm going to read to you here off of slide 28, and I'll say it this way. A victim survivable, survivability potential decreases as the time of exposure increases. And so as time goes on, that curve just deteriorates. And so this is why fire department training, strategies, tactics, operation manuals, policies are written to include things like VES, is to try to rapidly identify the most dangerous location of the fire, deploy resources there in a reasonable tactical advantage strategy, and make rescues as quickly as possible to reduce exposure time.
Okay. Thank you, Vernon. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the recommendations that you have given all of us. I think we're going to be building a stronger public safety system just in general with these, so I appreciate that work. I do have concern, though, about this one as far as the investigation goes. You've listed some inadequacies of the investigation. Are these just that you did not receive this information, or it just wasn't done?
So because the, because the fire is under, was still under, classified as under investigation, we did get a bit of material. We got, we got documents, we got some photographs, no scene diagram. We got the interviews that were conducted, I think, in December of 2023. I guess what we're trying to say is we don't know what we don't know regarding the investigation. They indicate they have more information, but they cannot, they cannot release it to us because the fire is still under investigation. So, yeah, please.
I'll go out on a limb here a little bit and say this. In the information we did receive, I do not feel confident that the investigation was performed or the investigators performing the investigation adhered to NFPA 921 and NFPA 1033 standards. Those are professional qualifications for investigators, and those are essentially scene processing standards. And I may be surprised, and John is answering correctly, and we don't know what we don't know, but I feel confident telling you what I've seen right now calls into question how that was performed.
And we do have strong recommendation that there's... And we, we do have strong recommendation that, that there's, they're provided funding and training to, to do more than just inside, in-house fire investigation training, as well as strengthen their relationships with their partners that do exist outside of Wichita Fire Department. There are certainly a number of other fire departments that do have investigators in Sedgwick County, and we've, we're suggesting that, you know, sometimes additional eyes on things and staff and manpower can help. Yeah, so those are some of our recommendations.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Howell.
Just a couple more follow-up questions. So we know that the occupant in 301 walked out, they recognized the fire and walked out. 302 was rescued by firefighters, so they, obviously the stairwell wasn't stopping their access to 302. 305, I'm sorry, 304 jumped, which means they didn't feel like they could go down the stairs, and they did that before the firefighters got there.
Correct. They opened the, the, one of the residents say they opened the door, saw the fire, closed the door, and that's when they made the 911 call and got out the window. They also, I think it's important to note, they left an open line, so they made a 911 call, they were talking to the dispatcher, a different dispatcher than the one that answered to Paoli, and they also left, and I believe they left the phone in the unit, which was then an open line. So both 306 and 304 had open lines at some point. No more speaking, and the dispatcher was left to try to continue to figure out what was going on, and then at some point you have to move on if you're not getting any information.
And right, and so, and again, those, those folks that jumped out of the window in 304, firefighters don't know that when they're arriving, so they're trying to, they're trying to learn these things, right? But they did leave their phone behind, so it's confusing to the call taker to whether they should stay on that line or move on. 30, again, and then, then 303, again, they, they walked out, got burned in the fire, and there were some burn injuries. 305 jumped, because again, they couldn't get down the stairwell, right? So I guess my question would be, since all that happened really before the firefighters were able to get there and do any significant search and rescue, they did get into 302, the chance of them getting into 30, any of those apartments on the middle and top floors was obviously not going to happen through the stairwell.
It would be very challenging getting there through the stairwell. Correct.
So again, I make a point here, that door being open on 306 could not have been a firefighter that opened that door. They never got there.
We don't know if that, we, we asked, and we don't know if that door got opened. It did not get opened from the outside by a firefighter. It may have been opened at some point by a firefighter searching the inside, but we do not know.
Do you have any pictures of inside the apartment of 306? They're not part of this report today, but do you have pictures of inside 306?
We do. We have some, yes.
And you're telling me earlier that, or you said earlier that the fire investigation, they left the scene before the fire was even completely.
They left the scene at about 10, 10:10. They left the scene at 10:10, and the last engine left at 11:05.
Did they come back the next day and do additional investigation, or?
We, they didn't, the supplemental documentation they gave us out of their reporting system doesn't indicate any additional, doesn't report any of their additional follow-up. However, through interviews, we know that they did follow-up. They went back to the scene when insurance, the insurance investigators came, and they were there for that, but we, there's no information available to us on that.
I assume when they collect materials, what they're looking for is, is evidence of accelerants being utilized to start a fire. And so they collected some materials at the scene, I assume probably where the fire was hot in the stairwell. Do we, did we talk to the lab that that was sent to to find out what their holdup is?
Oh, we have, the reports from the lab are backed from, there was no accelerant found on those samples that were tested.
Okay, that's good to know that. Okay. Are there accelerant sniffing dogs available in the state of Kansas that should have been used here?
The Wichita Fire Investigation Unit called for, I think the state fire marshals, or called for a dog. I don't recall which agency it was coming from, and they were unavailable. They called for the local ATF agent to come and help, and that, he was unavailable as well. So there were no dogs available, and then other resources that they called were not available.
So they did make calls to the two agencies, and they did not respond, essentially? Not, not with any type of?
They responded, but they couldn't come, yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's disappointing to hear that. And we have our own now that I think we'll be willing to offer even to people out of state if we need to. So we have a dog, I guess it's in our own.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, to be clear, I don't know which, I don't recall at the moment which dog they called, which dog they called, but they did call four dogs.
And I probably, my final comment, we're running late here, is there any, any specu, are they supposed to speculate, is this like electrical or cigarettes or? Because here's the deal, I'm looking around the other, the other apartments nearby, there's no barbecue grills or ash cans or anything that I can see that would be likely to have started a fire, especially at four o'clock in the morning. So just wondering, if, what, how do they, how do they resolve this at this point? If they don't have any accelerants determined?
I apologize, Mr. Howell, if I can't. The investigation component, the cause and origin investigation component of our report was, is severely limited. Because we don't have the information, because the incident's still under investigation. And so I feel very conservative about how far I'm willing to go, because I don't have the information.
And I accept your answer. I mean, to also say, I believe this has been, you know, reconstructed, I mean, the building has been restored at this point, or it's being restored, one of the two. So the, the scene is, the ability to investigate the scene is gone. Everything, everything that's in, maybe been collected or, or kept as a consequence of the investigation may be available still to, to make determinations. But I agree with your comment, the fact that this is undetermined at this point, they have not made a conclusion, and after, it's been 14 months and three days and five hours since this happened, it is too long. I'm not sure it was taken so long here, but I, I, I am unwilling to accept that it's taken this long. So I appreciate your answer, but I don't think it's a good answer.
We, we mentioned that undetermined is a, is an acceptable finding of a fire, and you can open up that investigation if you find more information, and undetermined can, should also go through the hypotheses of fire causation, of which you still believe are competing for what is the cause. So if you're undetermined, it means you have multiple hypotheses on cause that you don't know. And so you, but you can posit that.
I, I think the message is that the fire is still listed as under investigation. So undetermined, intentional, none, none of that is associated with this incident as far as the information we've received. It is an open investigation, which then in turns limits the amount of access we have to.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Commissioners, any final questions? I want to thank you again for being here. You moved some schedules around to try to meet this deadline for us and try to get here as quickly as you can when we requested that you come today, and I just want you to know how much we appreciate it. This, Paoli, her family, friends, this community, our firefighters that were on scene, 911 dispatchers, EMS, and the community at large deserves this report, which is now public and be made public, and deserves sincere interest into all the things that took place that night as we continue to analyze our public safety ecosystem here. So what you've done today has been very helpful in that pursuit, so thank you again. Commissioners, I'll move to receive and file the Jensen Hughes presentation and final report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Lopez, Chairman Beatty.
Hi. Thank you again. You are doing this same presentation to Wichita City Hall at noon today. Again, thanks for being here. Okay, Commissioners, any other business needs to come before the commission? Tom? Good? Okay. We stand adjourned, thank you.